Scored District Board of Education Regular Board Meeting. Today is November 8th, Election Day. The time is 5:25 and I would like to call the session to order and ask Mr. Guzman if he would lead us in the flag salute.
Sure. Please rise. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Dr. Stern, would you like to read the mission and vision?
Sure. Our mission is educational excellence. Our vision is our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex, changing world.
Thank you. And I will read the BHUSD Community Pledge. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect for each other and our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty. Listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive. May I have approval for the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second the motion.
The motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mrs. Marcus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 with preferential vote from Alex Baden. Next on our agenda is the report from closed session.
Thank you, President Wells. The board has voted 4 to 0 with one abstention to approve settlement agreement OAH case 2022 07 07 8 0.
Thank you. Next, we have our Community Spotlight. And this month is Native American Heritage Month, and we honor and celebrate the Native American heritage. And tonight, we have a very special speaker, our Assistant Superintendent of Technology, Sandy Sosie, who will be speaking with us tonight. And thank you so much for being here.
I got upgraded.
And I just gave you a promotion.
You did. Sweet.
It'll be on next agenda.
Happy Monday.
We'll edit that part out.
All right. Yate, my name is Nujona Sandy Sosie, and I'm the Director of IT, but I will take the up.
Is your speaker?
Oh, I don't know. Hello? It is now. Okay. I'll start again. Yate, my name is Nujona Sandy Sosie, and I'm the Director of IT, but I got an upgrade tonight, so awesome. It's my pleasure to be asked to speak for Native American/ Indigenous People Month. I am half Navajo or Dene, as we call ourselves, which means the people. The Navajo Nation is the largest tribe in the United States. It takes up the Four Corners area of Arizona, New Mexico, Utah, and Colorado. I would first like to start with land acknowledgements. We're on lands of various tribes, and it's always important when we're celebrating different cultures to acknowledge the areas and the regions in which you live. The best way to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Month is just be aware of cultures that are surrounding you and the land in which you're on. I think it's a good first step in understanding cultures and their surroundings around here. Los Angeles is actually the largest, has the largest Native American population in the United States, which is really interesting. I say that because oftentimes in history books, Native Americans are taught as a culture of the past. We're taught as a dying culture and not a culture that's currently living. And it's important to acknowledge when teaching lessons throughout history that we are a current people, that we are celebrating, that we do build our history, we teach our history to our families and share that with our cultures as well. So that's another acknowledgement within cultures, especially Native American culture, that I would like to share as well. Although I think it's great to have a month to acknowledge, I am Navajo all year round, so it's something that I celebrate daily, recognizing where I am and where I'm from. So my paternal clan, or my father's clan, is from the Many Goats Clan. My maternal clan, my mother is white, is called the Belogana Clan, and that translates to the people we fight with clan as well. My dad and my family, on my dad's side of the family, was born on the reservation. My grandmother, her name is Yela Nezbaht, it means warrior princess or the one who guides and walks with the warrior, was a big part of our family. We would go back and visit her all the time. She was often taken away when she was young by the government to be sent to boarding schools. She ran away so many times that the government eventually stopped chasing her, so she never learned to speak English. She only spoke Navajo. My dad, on the other hand, was taken by boarding schools where he was given an education, but oftentimes, he was punished or harshly spoken to when he tried to speak Navajo and/or celebrate their culture, which in turn was detrimental for my sister and I because, growing up, he never taught us the Navajo language. We knew words, I can understand it, but the fluency in the language was never there. So we're often, like, my generation's often called the last generation as we were skipped a lot because of what our parents kind of went through when they were in the boarding school system. Part of what, you know, my dad and I do right now is try to grow and learn and definitely spread that down to my children as well. So we work really hard in teaching my son Edison Shanto and my daughter Juniel Nezbaht the language and the culture and kind of acknowledging where we come from. And it's hard to think, you know, because it's my dad, but it wasn't that long ago. This is like in the 60s when boarding schools were a big part of our culture. And oftentimes, when I would go and speak at different school sites, different classes, colleges' classes, high school classes, and tell this story, I think, once again, we think about Native Americans as a person of the past, like, way, way, way back, and not something that this has happened within the recent years, within the 60s and stuff recently. And a lot of this is slowly being acknowledged within these days. But I think that, like I said, a big part for us right now and what we do to celebrate day-to-day is speak the language with our kids, talk about our family, talk about things that we love. Stories is always a big thing around this time during the winter and the fall. We start telling stories about our culture, and we would go back and visit my grandmother and stay with her. She was a rugweaver by trade. She did not have, like, a traditional job. She worked on the land. She would work with her livestock. Like I said, she was a rugweaver, so we'd go back there, help her shear the sheep. She would use natural dyes. We'd watch her spin the wool. We would cook together, and then during the wintertime, we'd share stories with our families and kind of share that. And like I said, she only spoke Navajo, so it was always interesting to sit there and hear her talk. And we would speak to each other in Navajo, and I would respond back in English, and we would always understand what we were saying, but, like I said, the fluency wasn't there. As things started to progress within the Navajo language as well, it's interesting to learn because we don't have a lot of words for things like laptops or computers or TVs because those weren't in existence when the language came about. So part of my background and what I've done throughout the years is speaking on two different classrooms, like I said, from kindergarten all the way through college, about kind of experiences and traditions, depending on kind of what the class needs are. Recently, I've been going into my son's class. One of my favorite books to share, especially for children, because oftentimes, people are like, "Do your children know that they're Native American?" It's like, "Well, they kind of understand, but they're also three and six," so that's another part of it as well. There's a really great children's book that we read together, especially when we go visit their classrooms, called Fry Bread, that kind of weaves in the various cultures. I think the other thing to acknowledge is oftentimes, tribes, we are very different. We all have our own language, we have our own customs, we have our own, you know, traditions. And even though we're categorized into one big group, we're vastly different from one another. Language families, like I said, change from one side of the country to the other side of the country as well. And then sharing stories, kind of like where our stories come from, how they're built into our day-to-day lives, such as the cradle board. I was carried in a cradle board as a child. I had my son and daughter in one as well. So it's those small things that we do day-to-day, and we keep it in our house. We share the stories of what, you know, how we build our background into each of our items as well. So, once again, thank you for letting me come up and speak. I appreciate it. And like I said, the best way to kind of acknowledge Indigenous Peoples' Month is just learn about the lands and traditions that are within you locally and kind of where you're currently living.
Don't go, don't go. Thank you so much for being, this is so enriching, and I just really appreciate you speaking today. I have the most basic question to ask you because I get confused about which land we are on here. Is it Tongva here?
Predominantly, yes. Most of the Los Angeles area, and there's the Chumash up in the little bit north, because I'm not a California tribe, I'm on the other side, but there's a couple, but yes, those are the predominant.
Predominantly Tongva. I'm gonna let everybody go around, but while they do, I am gonna, I am curious to hear of one of, as a child, what one of your favorite stories were. You guys go ahead.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sosie, for speaking. And I know that Native American heritage and the history is a really important part of curriculum, especially, I think, in fourth grade, but I think a really important part of it is actually learning from someone who, you know, has Native American heritage, and I'm so glad to hear that you're actually visiting classrooms, and I hope that that continues throughout the months. Thank you.
Well, I really have to tell you, I loved hearing your story, number one. That was fantastic. I love the comment you made that we celebrated American Native Month for one month, but we really, like, all the other things that we do during the year that we celebrate, we should be thinking all year long for all of them. So I am glad that you brought that out. That was a great thing to do. And I learned, I learned so much about your particular tribe and your group that's so completely different from all of the rest, and I really, I loved it. But I have something I wanted to share with you tonight. "By the shores of Gitchigumi, by the shining sea, by the standing waters, at the doorway of his wigwam, in the pleasant summer morning, Hiawatha stood and watched." Now, for those of you that have never heard that poem, that is the poem of the Song of Hiawatha, written 200, almost 200 years ago by Henry Longfellow, Wadsworth Longfellow. And I'm gonna ask a question, and this is now, these are the story of Hiawatha and Minnehaha, two very fictional Indian characters, but nonetheless, I grew up in that part of the country. And the name Hiawatha means a man who brings, he means wanting waters, he brings rivers. And the name Minnehaha means laughing waters. So in my state, Indian culture is very memorialized because there's parks, streets, lakes, falls, creeks, you name it, either Minnehaha or Hiawatha. And it's really, it's part of my culture back then. They were Ojibwa Indians, and they, well, Hiawatha was, Minnehaha wasn't. There was a tragedy of their love story. But I just need to tell you that it's interesting that, I wanted to ask if anybody in there, if they know what the name, it says "by the shores of Gitchigumi," and the funny part about it, it was set on the shores of Lake Superior, which is the boundary of Minnesota, and Gitchigumi means, in Indian, Lake Superior. So if anybody wants to ask somebody what Gitchigumi means, it means Lake Superior. But I really enjoyed it. And I come from an area where there was a great Indian culture in Minnesota also, and it's memorialized with streets and everything like that. So thank you for sharing your story. I really loved it.
I really love this Community Spotlight. Thank you so much for sharing your story. I don't want to repeat what everyone else said, but really, like, it's just very special to have you here and learn more about your Navajo culture. I was really, I had no idea that LA had the largest, you said, Navajo population specifically?
Just indigenous people in general, yeah. We all flock here.
I didn't know that either. It's really illuminating for me.
Yes, a lot of Native Americans live here in general, and this is, between us and San Francisco, they're two of the largest tribes, like, not tribes, but largest Native American population. I know Cal State Long Beach has a big celebration, they have a powwow down on their grounds as well. I think Malibu has one. There's actually a lot in the Los Angeles area throughout the year.
Yeah, that was my question, so like, are there community centers? Where do you go to celebrate? Like, I also have kids around the same age as yours, and like, I was grateful we had, like, the rally here for, you know, Iran, so I could actually teach them about that part of their heritage. Like, where do you go? How do you do that with your kids here in LA, given there's such a large population?
So we just recently went to the one that was in Malibu, and there's just various things. So the big one that we typically annually go to is in Gallup, New Mexico. It's called the Ceremonials, and it's a very large one where tribes from Canada all the way through South America come up and celebrate. And it's just a time where, like, there's a big event at the night where each tribe comes out and celebrates or shows or showcases some of their dances, and there's general dances, like, a lot of the hoop dancing is kind of goes across various tribes because it's more of like a competitive dance, but then there's also more specific things, like with our tribe, because we have a lot of rugweavers, baskets, there's specific dances to that, like the Hopi tribes, there's, every tribe has their own thing. So it's nice that they acknowledge and have the various dances throughout the cultures that come in and celebrate. A lot of tribes are open, for the most part, where you can go, like, the Navajo Nation is one of the largest ones. Monument Valley, Antelope Canyon, part of the Grand Canyon, Canyon du Chai, all of those things are open. Navajo tribal parks that you can go and visit, and same with a lot of other reservations. And there are reservations that are closed, that you cannot have public access to. So I think that goes back to, like, learning about the areas and kind of visiting. You'll see pictures of the Grand Canyons, like those beautiful waterfalls. That's part of the Havasupai Nation. So you go down and visit the Havasupai Falls, and in turn, you're actually down in their village. So there's a lot of places that I think people do travel and go to, but don't always know that it's part of those Native American tribes, or like what Ms. Marcus was saying with the names, like, the Havasupai Falls are named after the Havasupai people. But, you know, sometimes people don't always equate when we're on different areas where those names come from.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I grew up in New Mexico, and I always, we were always in awe of the fact that there were, when we would drive through the state, there were places that were off-limits because they were, you know, Native American reservations, and it was always just sort of awe-inspiring that it was this whole different culture. And we, as non-Native people, always grew up with a sense that there were a lot of, you know, hardships, you know, that really, that these people faced. More recently, the COVID epidemic wiped out a bunch of people in New Mexico, a bunch, you know, they had never seen, they had never been exposed to anything similar, so it really hit them hard, is my understanding. And then sadly, there's a lot, my understanding is, there's a lot of Native people who are in between the more traditional living and then more sort of government subsidized, and a lot of them are left in the middle with extreme poverty, and it gets very cold in New Mexico. And there's, you know, a lot of the kids are really, you know, needing more support, especially given the COVID epidemic. Another thing that I've always thought about is that, my understanding is, the Navajo language is largely an oral language, so...
It's not a written language.
Right, it's not a written language. So that's, I mean, we really run the risk, as each generation goes by, we get further and further away from that language being at our fingertips. And I really admire that you are actively working with your children and going into classrooms to keep the language alive. And I know that it is such an amazing and obscure language that the code talkers, right? In World War II, they actually enlisted these Navajo gentlemen to use their language to, what's the word, to throw off the enemy when they were communicating.
It was an unbreakable language.
Right. You could not, you could not, like, deduce what they were saying.
Decoded, yeah.
And so it was very valuable. And I know that one of the oldest ones, I think, just died at like age 95, but it just shows the value of that language, the fact that it's an oral language, and that there is really a real need to preserve it. And I really hope that it never goes away.
Well, interestingly enough, so if you live on the reservation, part of their high school requirements are taking Navajo language, and then we have our own government system, like, there is a president of the tribe. So you actually have to take Navajo language and Navajo government as part of your exit for high school. So a lot of that has changed in the past couple of years because, like I said, my generation clearly am out of high school, but they acknowledged that there was a need to bring back that culture and language. And then, yes, the code talkers are always highly celebrated as well. And then going back to something else that you said, that there is a lot of poverty on the reservations, and there's a lot of things that they're doing to revamp it. My grandmother never had running water or electricity for a long time, so as much as I loved going back and visiting her, if it was snowing, I'd have to wake up my dad and be like, "Can you please walk me to the outhouse?" Because it is really far and really cold down there. But, you know, you're accustomed to that kind of living, and she lived that way her entire life. And we would always say, "Do you want to move out to California?" She's like, "Nope, this is my home, this is where I want to live, this is where I want to be." So it was always, for us, that nice experience of having kind of two different worlds that we grew up in, for the most part, and having that experience, because we would stay back there for like the whole month or months during the summer and kind of help her out and work with her as well.
And the other thing, too, that growing up, I learned about was just the relationship that the natives had with the land and teaching us the value of everything the land gives us and respecting it, because we surely don't. And so that was another great lesson to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy. And recognizing the land I grew up in, New York, was the Ramapo Mountain Tribe in Southern New York, Northern New Jersey. That was the tribe, and that was the name of my summer camp, too, was Camp Ramapo. It was coming from an experience of having taught fourth grade in California, and 20-plus years ago, when subject matters came up of the different European nations that came and kind of took over California and severely damaged the Native tribes, I appreciate the fact that I think curriculum is moving in a better direction now and being a little more truthful about things like Christopher Columbus and things like Thanksgiving and even the California tribes and the missions and the detriment that the Europeans had throughout the country, but at least from my point as a teacher. And I was able to start bringing the reality into my classroom of what happened, as opposed to just, you know, celebrating, let's say, missions. Let's talk about what that actually did to the Indigenous people here. And it was, it was kind of eye-opening, but now that I've seen that it's gone in that direction, you know, finally, that our state and our country are finally recognizing the importance of kind of telling the truth now and not the fantasy lore. That was, but thank you for sharing.
Thank you. Yeah, as a former elementary principal, that was one of the things that we kind of worked with, and I think the hardest part for a lot of teachers is having that first conversation with it, and we really looked at what the projects were, because they were building missions and bringing them in. We changed it within the last year to a legacy project, so kind of, let's look, knowing what we know now, how can we have kids do research to figure out kind of what the effects were later on and what could we have done differently? So the fourth grade team that I worked with last year, that was really a big part of what we were doing. And I know they were like nervous to come and ask me, they're like, "Can we ask?" I was like, "Yes, this is why we have this dialogue, because it's important to open up those conversations for our younger people, so they can start acknowledging and seeing kind of the world." And California history is a big part of kind of what we do in fourth grade, so...
Yeah, thank you.
I just so appreciate you talking about this, because this is, it is, this is what the Community Spotlight is for, is so that we can have these conversations and open up this dialogue and make it more accessible to everybody, because it's so relatable in so many ways. I mean, just being, having my father be Japanese-American and, because his mother spoke Japanese, and he grew up speaking Japanese in his house, but when he married my mother, who's American, you know, that language got lost. So I never, I never learned Japanese because my father never spoke it in the house. So I think hearing the stories, because it is an oral language, and how important the storytelling is, I'm just curious, because I so appreciate that, and preserving that, and thankfully, we can record things and we have that opportunity in recording in that way. But I do remember hearing something, I think it might have been on PBS or something, about preserving the language and really the stories. And so I'm curious, as a girl, what story, our stories resonated with you the most?
Well, I just was telling someone this the other day, that we don't tell stories in the summertime or during the spring, because that's when all the bugs are out, and bugs pick up what you say, and that's why they're around your ears, because they go and tell your stories to other people. So you really can't tell stories until like the winter, fall time. But some of the stories that my grandmother would tell us were, if you ever looked up what a cradle board looks like, the whole cradle board is built around our creation stories. And the other story would be about Spider Woman. So in Canyon du Chai, back where, close to where my grandmother lives, there's this very tall beaut, and it was said that Spider Woman lived on the top of that, and she's the one who helped the Navajo people during the winter and taught them how to weave and to build all of the spindles and parts that they needed to start making their rugs during the wintertime. And of course, the scary part of Spider Woman, though, and I always hated this part as a kid, because we'd go hiking down into the canyon all the time, was that if you were bad, then she would also weave webs and catch you and take you up to the top. And I remember, we'd always stand on the edge of the canyon, and my dad's like, "Do you see all those skeletons and bones at the top?" And I was like, "Oh, my gosh." But it's just stories like that, that weave into like behaving, and then also a creation story that kind of go along with it. So my grandmother would always tell us them in Navajo, and then explain, like, the parts and what she was doing when she was building her rug. So every little thing that we had growing up had a creation story, it was tied back to something, like, we had all of the mountains, I'll have a story, we have the Lukachukai Mountains that were, you know, my dad would drive us up in there and tell us about the monster slayers. So there's so many stories that, you know, they're very long and lengthy, but I think Spider Woman's probably one of my favorites. And then the scariest one, of course, were always about the skinwalkers that night, so we had a lot growing up, so...
Well, thank you very much. I look forward to spending more time with you.
Only during the winter.
Yes, absolutely. But thank you. I think it's just really enriching, and I just appreciate you coming here today and sharing, and that we can continue this beyond this month, so thank you. Thank you.
I mean, just real quick, I want to say to Sandy, it was for many people in this room, you know, we had the opportunity to interview Sandy, and so one of the first questions was, you know, "Tell us about yourself," something that's not on your resume. And Sandy began to speak about her Native American heritage, and it was just so incredible to start an interview like that and then to hear your passion, but tonight, I feel like we got the full story. Like, you left us wanting more in the interview process, but it was great to get the full story tonight, so thank you for sharing that.
And you're hired.
And I'm hired. I'm getting, I'm getting a promotion, I heard that. Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. May I have a motion for approval?
I'll move to approve the Consent Calendar.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Dr. Stern. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes 5-0 with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. Next item is the Superintendent Report.
Okay, don't blink, because you may miss it tonight. So we're very excited, we've worked so hard as a team to gather information so that we can share with you tomorrow our strategic plan update, our check-in with the data that we have. We're very excited about that. We're a little nervous as well, but we're excited for this opportunity to engage in another dialogue. It's been a couple of months since we've had this dialogue with our Board of Education, and it was really a very fulfilling experience for us as a cabinet and leadership team, and we're just looking forward to kind of picking that up again tomorrow. So some good things ahead. Couple just reminders, some really great programming. Mr. Seaman has done a great job with the Science Fair, along with Ms. Crane. Mr. Seaman, um, has done a great job, uh, with the science fair along with, um, Ms. Crane. Um, uh, and also our, our PTA and, uh, BHGF, uh, we're just so thankful for that's coming up again. Uh, the secondary science fair on November fifteenth. And I also just want to share with you that, um, you know, the, the community pledge, you, you hear us read it. Um, you know, we're, we're doing things within our own schools, uh, school sites to, um, keep this alive and keep that momentum going. And I just want you to know, I was at a, a conference a couple of weeks ago for the city superintendents, uh, across the state of California. And, um, I had a superintendent, uh, come up to me, um, and she wanted to speak with me on the break. Uh, when I had some time to talk about the community pledge, um, that was Dr. Fall Arsana, um, from the Maryville Joint Unified School District. And, you know, it, it just, it's interesting how this kind of gets out there and gets to different people. Um, and so we had a really nice conversation about, uh, how this, something like this could work potentially for her school district. And, um, it's exciting when it kind of comes back, when you least expect it, um, and, and know that it's helpful to somebody else in another school district. Um, we do have an opportunity, um, I tell you, we've had some challenges this year with, um, our, some of our students, uh, and their health. If you know Zoe Suter, um, she's experiencing, uh, an aggressive form of cancer. And, um, and this is quite a battle. Um, and the one thing that sets ourselves apart as a community is the support, the rallying around that we do with one another. Uh, when it comes to a family in need or a student in need. You know, there's been several announcements that I've provided you just the school year alone. Um, where, um, our students and families need some help who are battling, um, the challenge of a lifetime. Um, and we have that for Zoe. There is a URL, URL code, um, that, uh, we provided, we've sent this out many times. You'll see it again, uh, for Zoe and her family. It's a GoFundMe account. Um, uh, there is this opportunity coming up, um, on November fourteenth, on Monday, three forty-five, um, or four forty-five, excuse me. And it will be a soccer scrimmage on our own site. And it will be an opportunity for us to rally around Zoe and her family, uh, and her twin sister. And just, um, an opportunity to do what we can to support, uh, one of our own. Um, I've seen people do this the last six years that I've been here, uh, for just about every crisis that has come our way. I've never seen anything like it. I'm really asking for people to pull together again, uh, for Zoe. Uh, one of our students at the high school, a sophomore student that's, that's really, um, has the, the fight ahead of her. She has the will, um, and, uh, is looking for some family support and we're certainly glad to give it. So wanted to reshare that with you, if you haven't had a chance to see that already. Um, and then kind of on a lighter note, you know, every year the cabinet is just really wants to dress up, uh, you know, and I, you know, I give in to this request, um, because it is for the kids. So, um, they worked on me really hard, uh, to, uh, dress up. Uh, Sesame Street was the theme. And so this picture, uh, is cabinet, uh, where we went and we visited on Halloween. Um, at Hawthorne and Horseman. And it was, uh, actually a lot of fun. Um, we had a great opportunity to be in the parades and to, uh, just mingle with students and staff. Because, uh, really just about everybody was dressed up. So wanted to share that fun picture with you that really didn't get out very much, but, um, wanted to share that with you. And then it is election night, as most of you know. So, um, I just want to thank, uh, the candidates that are running, uh, for the seats of the Board of Education. Um, and, uh, you know, to put yourself out there, I could not even imagine. I, I, I feel like my job is really public. Uh, but I can't even imagine, um, how that is to put yourself out there and run a campaign and, um, and go through an election process. So, um, just want to say congratulations, uh, to all of our candidates tonight. Um, Ms. Dotis, Ms. Lavoie, Ms. Manicherry, uh, Mrs. Marcus and Dr. Sulkin. And that is my report.
Thank you so much. Uh, next we have our student board member.
Okay. So the first thing is just a spotlight for Norman Aids Wellness Wednesdays, which is fitting for the presentation we just had on the Bulldog, um, Aid Wellness Center. Um, so I just wanted to highlight that every Wednesday, um, BHHS Norman Aid posts about a specific topic related to their monthly aid theme. Um, and the posts are to promote, um, awareness on those issues. And then the Norman Aid peer counselors, which are students who, um, are part of the Norman Aid Center, um, teach lessons at lunch on those issues. Um, and this month's, um, theme is digital safety. And then just, um, a little bit from Saturday's, um, Women Life Freedom, um, rally in support of the women and the people of Iran. Um, I just wanted to share how the resolution that we approved, um, last meeting is really, you know, we're really taking action on that resolution. And the students especially, um, so many members of our community and the students were there, um, Kbev was filming and reporting. Um, ASB members were there with their signs and marching. And, um, our president, Ashley Girabchi, um, spoke. So I just wanted to share that. Um, and it was amazing to see how the community just came together on Saturday. And then just some upcoming events. Um, starting this Friday, the Norman Aid Performance Company is host, is having, um, their, or is performing the play that goes wrong at Horseman. Um, for pretty much the next week. And then a pretty early update, but, um, Thursday, December first is the BHHS UCLA Blood Drive. Um, so you know, that's a huge, it's a big thing in our community. So I hope to see a lot of people there. Um, and it always makes you feel really good after, you know, with the bandage on your arm, knowing that you've helped save lots of lives. And then I know Dr. Reggie, um, talked about, um, coming together to unite for Zoe on Monday. Um, and I just wanted to share that as well. Um, that is here at the high school, at, at, on the field. Yes. On Monday. Um, and then in honor of today being, um, National, uh, Election Day, um, I have two amazing students from the high school. Um, Golsa Sadri, Sadri and Justin Greenberg, who are the leaders of our youth political activism club at the high school. Who organized the first ever Beverly Hills High School voter registration drive. So you guys can take it away. And if you want me to switch slides for the pictures, I can.
Awesome.
Uh, hello, my name is Justin Greenberg. I first want to thank Alex and the rest of the board for giving us the opportunity to speak here tonight. Um, I also wanted to thank Ms. Goller and Mr. Kraft, because they've been super supportive in our club and also all of its endeavors. Cause trust me, there's been a lot. Um, I want to first talk about what our club really is. So we started this club because we wanted to create, uh, a safe and open forum for Beverly students to come in and discuss their political views. And we also want to increase our civil and political, uh, civic and political, uh, literacy within our community. Because that's really, really important. And then, um, basically our club has a couple of parts to it. One of which is bi-weekly meetings that we have to discuss political, uh, political matters. And also congressional acts that have recently passed and have recently been discussed. And so far, we've already talked about the current state of America in terms of politics. We've talked about abortion rights, healthcare rights, and we're having another meeting coming up, which is actually going to be tomorrow. In which we're going to discuss a recent controversial Florida senate bill. And then, um, our goal, our goal with the meetings is to really promote civil discourse. And through that, we're going to have students come in and we have them talk about their opinions. And we hope that each meeting, and so far they have, leads to productive discussions through the basis of policy and perspective. And then also what we've done is because right now our political state in America is extremely fractured. And it's extremely divided. And every day the divide grows more and more. So what we're trying to do is take people from each side of the political spectrum in our school, bring them into one classroom and have them discuss. Because what we're trying to teach students here is that even if you disagree with somebody's opinion, you can still discuss it. And then Golsa will talk about the voter registration drive.
Yes. Um, is my, okay. Uh, as Alex introduced me, I'm Golsa Sadri. Um, the other component of our club is like events and the actual activism part of our club. Um, the first of which was the first ever, um, Beverly voter registration and pre-registration drive. That occurred last Thursday and Friday during lunch and after school. Um, Justin and I worked very hard on it, um, making up flyers, emailing, uh, parents through both parent square and just emails in general. And using the Norman connection to spread our, um, message out to students. Um, our turnout was, uh, less than we hoped for, but more, more than we expected with twenty people pre-registering, um, to vote. Um, we're going to be having another voter registration drive in May before the primaries. And so through the rest of our, um, endeavors and programs and events that we implement throughout the year. We hope to see an increase in the number of people that register and pre-register in May. Um, I also wanted to talk about how, um, like really what our club is about, as Justin explained, is increasing not only having people under, with different political views under one roof and discussing those things civilly and, um, being productive with that. But also increasing the political and civic literacy of our community. Um, as we've seen through our club, we've gone through a couple of hiccups and we really want to, um, educate our community and our school. And, um, because I know that's something that I really care about is government and activism and all these different things. And so I hope to, um, that, that's reflected through our club and what we're doing. Thank you. Oh, and also happy election day.
Um, I just wanted to make one comment. I think one of the reasons possibly for the lower voter turnout was because, um, the government and economics classes that all seniors take. Um, the teachers were pushing for us to register so that, and that was like the week leading up to the registration drive. So that could have been a reason. So believe me, people have registered. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Uh, our next, um, item is board, uh, meetings. Alex or Rochelle, would you like to start?
Um, I, there were no meetings for me during the last couple of weeks since our last meeting. I, I did want to mention that, um, I really had hoped that I would go to the, uh, women's rights for fighting for freedom. Unfortunately, I had a previous engagement and couldn't make it. I hear it was amazingly, uh, the numbers were incredible. It was like you couldn't even move around. It was so crowded. And I want to compliment, um, um, Gabe, Mary and Ashley, the ASB president, who all had a chance to speak at the event. I really felt that we were well represented and it was really a very successful event. But, um, I have no other meetings to, uh, re- report on.
Well, uh, I, I, I wasn't at this part of the last meeting, but I did have, uh, a follow-up with some BHGF board members. After my comments a couple of board meetings ago, where I was clearly very frustrated, felt a bit stonewalled by BHGF. I will say that I, it's, I do think there was some poor communication in the explanation of why I was not brought into some of those meetings. I subsequently did have very productive meetings, uh, specifically with Lee Eggerman, who is, uh, to one of the board members there. We went through the bylaws together. I think there's a general desire to keep BHGF, uh, apolitical and not favor any specific board members. There's some stuff I just don't agree with. However, I will say that I don't think they're completely unreasonable positions in some of the things that have been taken. So I'm just glad to say there's been a healthy reset. Uh, there's some productive discussions moving forward. And, uh, you know, I think we got to rethink, uh, given some of the, um, some of what I got from BHGF. I think we need to rethink maybe whether a board liaison from the board directly on the BHGF board will work. I think there's, we may have to rethink how that working relationship works, which is fine. Uh, but we'll get there and I think we'll get to, uh, a productive place, uh, moving forward. So I just wanted to share that.
Talked yourself out of a jump.
I did not attend any meetings, um, but I was also very happy to hear about the, uh, outcome of the, um, Iranian event. And I was happy to hear that Mary spoke and our ASB president.
Um, the next Laxa meeting is next Monday, so I will bring a report back following that one.
Um, that I did not attend any meetings, but as everybody said, I did attend the, um, the rally, the freedom rally. And it was really moving and it was just really fantastic to see Kbev there and so many of our students and families. Um, both Iranian and, and non-Iranian families there to support our community. And it was just very emotional and very, very moving. And I would say a, a community building event. So it was really fantastic. Anything from you, Dr. Brege?
I don't think you want me to list my meetings.
Okay. Too many to count for him. Okay. Um, next on the agenda is planning and facilities. Rafael?
Okay. Thank you so much again. And, uh, good evening to our board president, Ms. Mary Wells. Um, our board members, uh, Dr. Brege, cabinet members, uh, as well as members of the public. Thank you so much for the opportunity today to present regarding planning and facilities. Uh, so eleven A is the approval of a change order number two to the agreement with Kazoni Inc. Does business as, uh, Kazoni Construction for bid number twenty twenty-one zero zero five Beverly Vista School Site Modifications and Enhancements. Package number two project. So essentially, uh, there was some additional work that was needed. Uh, the initial proposed cost by the contractor, uh, was seventy-one thousand four hundred and forty-eight. We're thankful, uh, for Fonder Solari and their team, they reviewed and negotiated the cost of the additional work that was required by the city. And, uh, regarding ADA work, um, and that was, went from seventy-one thousand four hundred down to forty-nine thousand, uh, four ninety-seven. So essentially we're asking, uh, and respectfully requesting that the Board of Education approve change order number two to the agreement with Kazoni. Uh, in the amount of forty-nine thousand four ninety-seven and forty-seven cents. Thank you.
Any questions?
Um, yes.
I have a question. Um, you said this has to do with the, uh, first one, with the, uh, ADA requirement on the street corners?
Yes. It's.
Aren't the corners the property of the city? And shouldn't they have been responsible for something like that?
This is for the, the work that, that we would be responsible for in order for the city to, uh, for us to be able to complete the project. So it's on, on our side, essentially. So, and, and again, initially that was about seventy-one thousand, uh, five hundred. That got negotiated down to forty-nine thousand four ninety-seven.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I guess the confusion is, um, if it's on our side, how does the city have jurisdiction over what we do on our side?
It's for the, um, so e- essentially it's for the ADA improvements needed to be performed on the drop-off area and the city sidewalks. So because we're, we're making some adjustments to those areas, we have to then, you know, conform with where we have, like it's, it's in our requirements.
So it's their property, our work?
Um, y- yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, may I have a motion to approve?
I will move for the approval of change order number two to the agreement with Kazoni Incorporated. Doing business as Kazoni Construction for bid number twenty dash twenty-one dash zero zero five. The Beverly Vista School Site Modifications and Enhancements Package Number Two Project.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Mr. Halimi. And I would just like to thank Fonder Solari for negotiating that down. I really appreciate it. It's refreshing to have someone negotiate on our behalf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Baden. The next item?
Thank you. Uh, so item eleven B. So this one, this item is for, uh, the approval of amendment number one to the contract for bond program construction management services with Fonder Solari. So on July thirteenth, as you recall, the district approved the contract with Fonder Solari for bond construction management services. The contract specified the amount of five hundred thousand for onboarding services. And specified the, that the not to exceed amounts for all projects would be approved by the board at a later date. And so, uh, Fonder, the Fonder Solari team was able to determine the not to exceed, again, uh, not to exceed budgets. And the additions of program director position to be considered at exhibit D of the existing contract upon approval of this amendment. And as you can see, there's a list there of the different, uh, projects, um, as well as the duration of services and the projected budgets, uh, that they estimated. Uh, for a total of not to exceed total of twelve point seven million. All services will be charged on a time and materials basis per the approval rates in the contract. The costs above represent not to exceed amounts per project. And, uh, again, as a cost-saving measure and to eliminate the need to add a senior project manager for active and future projects. Fonder Solari requests the addition of the program, of the title program director at a billing rate of one seventy-three per hour. So it is respectfully requested that the Board of Education approve the addition of a total of twelve point seven, uh, million. As a budgetary not to exceed amount for the contract with Fonder Solari. The costs associated will be paid out of measure E and measure BH funds.
Any questions?
The twelve seven three nine million, uh, is that now taken out against the bond that we have? The money that's left in the bond that reduces the bond that we have remaining? How does that affect it? I'm not, I'm very much in favor of it, but I just wanna know what the bottom line will be that we might, this is what they're expecting will last for three, say, three months, right? I mean, say, three years, thirty-six months, I see this.
Uh, yeah, so it it will be paid out of the current bond funds. Yes, that's correct.
But my 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 question will be approximately, how much then are we going to be left with uh with this expenditure to work with what needs to be done?
So at our last um board meeting, we had a study session where uh we looked at these uh costs and those were also included in there. So um we could, I could get you those those numbers. I don't have, I don't have it off the top of my head. There's still some other factors.
There was a line item on that on those.
It's in that study session. Just remember, there's still some other factors there that have to be uh determined, uh that we still, they're still quoting. Um, and so once we get those quotes, we're going to come back again to see what that, what the, what that looks like.
So 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 stated slightly differently, all of the the twelve point seven million of expenditures we see here have already been assumed in the study session uh presentation that we.
That is correct, yes.
But that's what I wanna clarify. Thanks.
Um, for the retaining walls in Building C, um are those built currently or once those projects commence?
Uh, it it would be once those projects, well, it's throughout the 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 whole part of the project as we go through DSA, as we get everything approved. I mean, they they're in that whole, the whole.
Well, those projects are approved, so we're waiting, we're waiting for what you were talking about um before we go out to bids.
Yes.
So so the what I'm, what I'm wondering, because there's a time, there was thirty-six months, fifteen months assigned to each of those. So I just wonder, did that clock start? Did those fifteen months, is that from today? Is that from when they commenced construction?
It is, uh, we have Mr. Solari here. He could clarify that just to make sure, I wanna make sure I give you the right answer here. Um, one second.
And while he's coming up, Rafael, and there's no other program management costs that will occur?
Eh, no, there there is, there's no other costs. These are, they're only building on a time and materials basis, which is a good advantage uh for the district. Um, and there is no other sort of program fee.
Okay.
As, you know, and so so that's helpful. And there's also no markup costs.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Good evening, board members. Uh, so to answer, uh, to answer your question, uh, as we are charging time and material, those durations are estimated durations for the services associated to each one of these projects. We may or may not charge anything to that project right now. For example, if we have a meeting retain, related to retaining wall project, we may charge a couple of hours to that budget. But that budget is already considered for that, so it's not like we are tapping to something that is not uh forecasted.
Okay, so the 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 time, but the services, the time listed, right, the fifteen months, thirty-six months, is that your estimated total project time from like now till completion?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you for.
But that, that's not necessarily just the duration for construction of.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand, but the, but it's basically now. It allows you, gives you that window to start now.
Exactly.
Okay.
And just another clarification, this whole thing per your comment, it may goes further than thirty-six months. It's not that we are gonna finish everything in this thirty-six month. That's basically just the budgetary allocated duration for each one of these projects.
Would you at some point at the end of that, if if it exceeds the thirty-six months, would you come back for more possibly, another?
Again, we are time, charging time and material and not necessarily it's like all of this is gonna be exhausted in that thirty-six.
No, I understand that. But if it is, you would come back?
I don't anticipate, but yes, if we're running out of the budget for something, but I I don't think that's gonna happen.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I had a question that I had asked you previously, like in terms of, because there's a lot of questions about, you know, we made a lot of changes. And the comparison to had we stayed with TCDS and estimate of what it would have cost are the savings that we're actually uh, what that savings would look like.
So so essentially, you know, there's, there's a, the the contracts are are different, right? Uh, this contract is a time and materials. There's no upcharge uh for uh like reimbursables, uh, the two, the two and a half percent fee. So if we were to just look at the two and a half percent fee and multiply that out against the budget, we're looking at eh eh essentially a savings of about uh five million dollars there uh based on not having that term.
Just the two and a half percent.
Just, that's just the two and a half percent. We also, I also went back and did a, uh, you know, we we looked at a conservative estimate of like looking at some historical bills versus the bills that uh we have, that we've been able to build thus far with uh Fonder Solari. So we were very conservative in this estimate, but essentially um we're looking at about uh monthly savings to the tune of around seventy-four thousand dollars a month that that we'd be i- in regards to comparison and of what we're seeing in rates and time and materials. The the rates are are much lower, uh, you know, a- across the board in in the Fonder Solari contract. So when you estimate that out over the the months, thirty, let's say thirty-six months, you're looking at about two point six million more dollars in savings. So a total of about seven point six million there that we're uh assuming in would be a conservative estimate of what those savings are. Now, a- again, that's what we're estimating uh conservatively based on the old rates. Now, I know with the new uh, there's proposals, I don't know what those rates would have been, but they would have been higher than.
You didn't use the proposed.
No, because they were never adopted and so, you know, eh, so we wanted to go based off what we knew and for sure. And so based off of that, uh, and just being conservative, we're looking at about seven point six million in savings.
Right. I just, I mean, I recall like just as a director, the proposed rate was two seventy-five for um, for Don Blake and for Pam Johnson. And they were working more than forty hours or up to forty hours a week. And uh, there's a proposal here for the project director at one seventy-three, so that's a hu- hundred dollars less an hour.
Well, uh, when we looked at, um, and I have this here somewhere, we were looking at the savings in regards to uh percentages and hourly, aver- average hourly rates. And it's about twenty-one percent lower in in regards to hourly rates when we look at it across the board. So so a- and then the reimbursables, there is, there was a markup in in the other contract for reimbursables. That was about a ten percent markup and with uh this contract, they they are doing no markup for any reimbursables. So uh, I think the bulk of the savings really though comes from the 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 two point five percent fee. That's, that's where you're realizing the the larger portion. Uh, but you also, if your rates are twenty percent lower uh across the board, then you're going to realize savings there.
Right. And then there's the the issue of staffing, because we never had a handle on the staffing plan with with TCDS. And now we actually have staffing that meets the actual work. So I think it's gonna be more efficient.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, may I have a motion?
Uh, I'll make a motion for the approval of amendment number one to the contract for Bond Program Construction Management Services with Fonder Solari Inc.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mr. Halimi and seconded by Dr. Stern. Um, before we vote, I just wanna say that I'm really proud of this board and all the actions that we took to get us to this point. Uh, and all the steps that we took in terms of going out for the RFP and and taking this process to look at a new bond program manager and construction manager. I feel very confident that we can say that this bomb program now is in a markedly better place, not just from uh changing our program and bond manager, but also in terms of how we've restructured the reporting. Um, we now have a licensed program and construction management firm that's billing at market rate, which we've confirmed by going out for a bidding process. And in addition, Fonder Solari is providing oversight and they're negotiating on our behalf, which we just heard on the last motion that we just passed. They're negotiating on behalf of the district and and our taxpayers. And we are saving millions of dollars that will now go to benefit our schools and our children instead of others, which is who our taxpayers intended the bond funds to go to. So I really wanna thank you. I couldn't be more um proud of this board and I couldn't be more excited to approve this.
Uh, I would like to add, but amen.
I would like to just make the comment that eh in going through the agenda, I asked for the backup of a warrant that was going to be written to Fonder Solari. And it was to do with these salaries of what they were gonna be. And I was amazed at how much less they were than what we were paying to DC. I shouldn't say this, cause maybe you'll raise it, but don't. TCDS, that was uh, I was floored by the difference in the amount of money per hour.
And I would just like to say, as we're talking about these rates, this isn't because we want to go with what's the cheapest uh rate that we could find. This is the market rate and we are getting very qualified professionals. And I couldn't feel uh better about this program. I think we are in very good hands. And I think we're probably, this bomb program is in the best hands that it's been in since its inception. So I'm very, very happy about this.
Agreed.
Okay, I will call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. Congratulations and welcome. Okay, the next item on our agenda, maintenance and operations.
Thank you. So this item is item twelve A, the award of the facilities yard clearing aggregate base and compaction project at the Beverly Hills High School, bid number twenty-two, twenty-three, zero, zero, nine to RE Schultz. This was then done through a cupka. Uh, so so essentially, there is a area, right, that needed uh a solution um over at the high school facilities yard. Uh, there was a notice that was issued on Wednesday, October twelfth to uh three thirty-nine paving and and general engineering contractors and posted on the BHUSD website for the scope of work, including demoing of the existing asphalt where they took those uh buildings, cutting down any existing galvanized piping, fill and compaction of depressed area with aggregate base, raising the storm drain catch basins to and um installation of traffic concrete um boxes. Five quotes were received by the deadline. All quotes were reviewed by the Fonder Solari team and we appreciate that. Uh, and to assure compatibility with the requirements of the project, uh, and and then the recommendation was to award to the lowest bidder, which in this case was RE Schultz. It it is respectfully requested that the Board of Education approve the cost of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and ten to clear, fill, and compact and raise the existing drum, str- storm drains in the facilities yard to accommodate the relocation of district-owned storage containers. The costs associated with this project will be paid out of the general fund and this work will have a cost impact of fifty-eight thousand seven hundred and ten dollars.
May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the awarding of the facilities yard clearing aggregate base and compaction project at the Beverly Hills High School. Bid number twenty-two dash twenty-three dash zero, zero, nine to RE Schultz.
I'll second.
The motion was made by Mrs. Marcus and seconded by Mr. Margot. Any last questions or comments?
Um, I I have a question. Did any of this maintenance movement at all have anything to do with our construction program for the bond uh at all? And that my question then retaliates to the, or ties into that, could this have been paid for by the bond itself? Did any of this work that we're doing was a result? Cause I remember we moved facilities and maintenance for certain things and now uh, we're asking the general fund to bu- pay for it and I don't know that I would agree with that.
So uh, when we looked at the best uh place to pay it out of, uh, we we thought the general fund would have been the, would be the best because it would be something theoretically that we would have done through deferred maintenance either way. Uh, we, they had to put some buildings there, um, and essentially those were removed and it left these areas like, uh, I don't know, I don't know if you've seen it. Um, but it's these areas where eh you pretty much have to fill it. There's different ob- uh, uh, object, uh, things that we could do, but that would be more so uh, I I would consider that to be more deferred maintenance than than bond. Um, because of just the general work that you would normally have to do for your existing asphalt and concrete around the campus.
What, what is the area going to be used for once it's repaid, you know, mitigated?
I think it's really just so that we have, uh, we don't have those, cause it it's, it's almost like it's an area where it's potentially hazardous. We've had some people, you know, get some, you know, tires and stuff. So it's like, we we wanna make sure that we we fix that so it's drivable there and everything. Uh, yeah, I believe there was two, how many uh, do you recall how many portables were there? I mean? Yes. Yes, it was, it was a number of them.
It was in that main portable section?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So there is, now it's just like a, like holes. I don't know if you've seen those, but.
I've seen them.
Um, yeah.
Why, why was, why, my question is, is getting back to why were the fa- facilities and maintenance buildings moved? Or the facilities, it's the yard was, was it gonna originally have anything to do with construction?
You know, I'd have to go back and look eh at that exactly. Um, and and I could get back to you just to make sure I give you the right answer on that.
I I would like an answer to that because I'm not so sure that I'm willing to take it out of the general fund if it has any relationship whatsoever to the bond measure.
Okay, uh, what I could do is, you know, definitely, uh, if we do find that that's the case, um, I could, we could bring in a a change in the account string.
I'll go with that, but I would like an answer to that.
Well, I'll make sure to follow up.
Thank you.
If there's no other questions, then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes five zero with a preferential vote from Alex Bodden. The next item on the agenda is board policies. Thank you very much, Rafael.
Thank you. Hello, uh, we are here for the second reading of Board Policy and Administrative Regulation five one four one point two one. Um, this is in regards to allowing um our staff to have uh Narcon, Narcan on campus in case of opioid opioid overdoses. And it's updating our um EpiPen rules as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading of BP and AR five one four one point two one, administering medication and monitoring health conditions.
I'll second.
Motion was made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Mr. Halimi. Uh, if there's no questions, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
With a preferential vote for Alex Bodden. Thank you.
Good news, we also have uh found a source to receive EpiPens free. So we are receiving EpiPens uh for every, new ones and updated ones for every site. Um, which is a great savings, cause they run about six or seven hundred dollars a piece. So we're getting two per site and we found a resource to receive them free.
How did they become six or seven hundred bucks? I remember when they were like, like eighty?
What's the shelf life on those?
Um, they, I believe it's two years, but it's a, it's a program that we found, that my staff found and we participated and we'll be able to renew them every year.
Nice job.
Every, every time they expire.
Nice job.
While we're on that subject, um, in terms of rescue medicine, uh, for people with seizures, how do we tr- do we have training for that right now going on? Cause I.
Absolutely.
Right now, it's epilepsy awareness month as well.
Yes, I believe you're referring to Dystat. And yes, we have that and we have it on campus. Um, our nurse has trained all of our health techs, as well as there are backup staff members available um on the site if a student is in crisis and the nurse or the health tech is not available. And we have it at every site.
Okay.
And e- and students with epilepsy also have individual health plans. And we walk through um the administration of, the administering of that medication and the plan for each student.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is public comment. The first person that we are going to hear from this evening is Ralph Levy. He's not here? Okay, I'm gonna move on. The next person that we're going to hear from is Tina Weiner. Welcome. And you have three minutes.
I think I have six, no?
Oh, sorry, you have six minutes.
Tina, can you get as close as you can so I can hear you well because sometimes like, thank you.
Okay. Good evening. I am going to be reading a letter from a member of our community and then have a few comments of my own. So, um, the letter begins, "Our children are our everything. When we had our first daughter, our world changed. We named her after both of our grandmothers. She was the girliest of girls. Around seventh grade, things started to change. She wanted to change. It's not easy to see your child making decisions for themselves, but for us, we had to have the deepest understanding that they were struggling with their identity. And they needed to figure it out for themselves. For us, we see our job as parents as to guide and support, not make their decisions for them. We were fortunate enough that our child was going through their process under the protective and hugely supportive umbrella of the Beverly Hills School District. The administration could not have been more accommodating and kind. I truly believe this made it possible for our child to go to school happy and feel supported every single day. We believe that forcing our child to hide who they are will slowly chip away at their sense of self. We see Norman Aid as a support service for not only our child, but others who need to go for support, understanding, as well as valuable resources, to feel protected. We as parents have a very hard time understanding why other individuals would want to limit such an important service that is provided to this community. Not all children will end up using Norman Aid, but the ones who will, but for the ones who will, it will be life-changing for them. It's crucial not to remove these services from the kids who need them. Providing these spaces for students who are struggling is a difference between staying safe and suicide. As a mom to a transgender child, I am not willing to take the risk. As a mom to a transgender child, I am not willing to take the risk with my son. Every parent wants their child to feel accepted. Whether they are dealing with a learning disability, ADD, weight issues, acne, bullying, we are all in the same parenting boat together. We should be protecting each other and not fighting each other. These kids need a safe place, and it is up to us, parents, to provide them one. Norman Aid is here to help these kids to get through high school safely. Um, please don't try to limit or eliminate these gender support resources from students and their parents. What you're doing by fighting Norman Aid is not protecting your child, but you're hurting someone else's, such as mine, and possibly your neighbors. School can be hard, teachers are difficult, friendships aren't easy. We as parents do all we can to support our children with tutors, working with the school, IEPs, helping our kids work through challenging moments with friends. For us, we see Norman Aid in the same way. It's a resource that is available to our children to help them have gender-affirming programs and access better education, and we hope people see it the same way. Norman Aid is a service model for the benefit of our children. Rather than advocating to limit or eliminate gender support services, please take the time to educate yourself, to see what a great benefit it is for so many. It's there for those who need it, whether that be our child, a neighbor down the street, a childhood best friend, a classmate, or your own kid. You never know what someone else is going through, please take a moment and think about that before you speak. Thank you for taking the time to listen to very loving ninth-grade parents." And I have a few comments of my own. "So the story that parents shared is not dissimilar to the experiences so many middle school and high school students and parents are having. In my house, the cry for help came in seventh grade also. At that time, I had no idea that it had anything to do with gender identity. I just knew my child was struggling. The first people I turned to were the B- BVMS counselors and Norman Aid at BHHS. While I was sad and scared, they reminded me how sad and scared my child must also be. They allowed me to lift myself from the equation and really help my child to find resource, just resources to start meaningful dialogue. In my house, it took about five months before we heard the words non-binary and were able to start having that conversation. But without their help, the path that my child took could have been substantially different. As parents, we hope that our kids will automatically come to us to discuss what they're dealing with. However, this often seems not to be the case. It takes time and trust to share what's going on in their lives. What I have learned in the last few years is the greatest gift we can give to our kids is an adult, to talk to them, to listen, who understands, and who can give them guidance. While many of our kids lean on their friends for advice, fourteen-to-eighteen-year-olds often lack the life experience and perspective that an adult can give them. Norman Aid is here for that, and for all students who are struggling with a ra- a wide array of issues. In time, our kids will talk to us, but in the meantime, we can't risk having them close up and feel that no one could possibly understand what they're feeling. Finally, I urge all parents to take a look at the Norman Aid website. There's so many amazing resources there, and particularly click on the link in the LGBTQIA+ resources that'll take you to information about Assembly Bill twelve sixty-six. The services which are being provided by BHHS counselors and also the Norman Aid Center are not only the right thing to do for high school-age students seeking support, they are mandated by California state law. The California Department of Education FAQ, which is on that website, clearly walks parents through what schools are required to provide for students and the privacy which students are entitled to when sharing information with school staff. I commend BHUSD for having offered in-service to staff members in the past and, and, um, educating them on what Assembly Bill twelve sixty-six requires of them, and for continuing to post resources like these in very public places so that students can seek out an understanding individual during their school day to hear them, to see them, to support them and guide them. Thank you."
Thank you so much. Uh, next we'll hear from Jen Peterson. She was here, I saw her.
Yeah, it was about the Bulldog Aid during the study sessions.
Okay, all right, um, well then that concludes our public comment, thank you very much Tina for speaking. Uh, next we have communication from board members.
No communication.
I'd just like to congratulate... I'd like to congratulate the, uh, students on the, uh, formation of the Youth Political Activism Club. I think that's a great group that's gonna start out, and I look forward to hearing from some of their things, because it, I really am thrilled that they're nodding, they're so articulate and so good in what they do, it, I was really impressed, and I want to thank you for doing that and being a part of that. And I'm going to head on home soon, quickly, and find out the results of the election.
Get that coffee cake in the oven, Ms. Marcus.
It's waiting for all of you.
Um, congratulations again, as, uh, Dr. Breggy said, to, to all the candidates that have been running, uh, for this position. I think it's great that there were so many, uh, qualified candidates this time around, and I look forward to seeing also who's gonna be filling this seat. Um, uh, I didn't get a chance to say it before, but it was an incredible, uh, event to be at, uh, this weekend, uh, to march alongside so many people from our community, uh, recognizing, um, you know, women's rights, those in Iran. It was an awesome opportunity to take my kids there and actually educate them about my culture, uh, you know, speaking of kind of educating our, our children, and, uh, I enjoyed seeing Mary there and so many other people from our, um, but, community. Um, I did just want to say to Tina, thank you so much for sharing, um, uh, that, that, that meant a lot to hear from you and to, you know, hear the story of, but, other parents in our community. Um, I think it is important for people to understand, first of all, what's just required by law, what we have to do at a minimum, right? We, we, we have to abide by the law. But, uh, there are a lot of people, as we're, as we were talking about earlier with Bulldog Aid and Norman Aid, like, we have to provide these resources to our students, not just because they're required by law, but because we need to take care of their, um, social, emotional well-being, they need to feel supported, they need to have resources. I think there is some underlying fear from people in our community that those resources, those availability may turn into advocacy, and I think that's where we need to, you know, understand each other, we need to hear each other out, understand where everybody is coming from, and not let it, you know, reach that place. A- and, and I think there's always some underlying fear that that may be where it's going, because there is a very powerful, um, you know, there, there are powerful forces out there that are pushing agendas. I don't think that's what's happening here, I really don't. But I think that when, when, when you have all of these conversations happening on the national stage and on the state stage, it's natural that some of this stuff comes up, and we have to remind ourselves that we're, we all have the same goal, and that's just to take care of our kids, um, and those resources are important to have in, to have in place. So, thank you for spotlighting that, yeah.
I also wanted to say Tina, thank you very much, um, I think, Gabe, you're absolutely right. There is a fear that if you, um, introduce a concept that is supportive to children, then by way of suggestion, they're going to become, say, LGBTQ, right? And I'll tell you that, um, I am gay, and my parents were as straight as they could possibly be. My mom would get really excited when the pool guy would come over, and my dad loved the ladies, and I'm telling you, I, if that's any indication, you cannot, you know, guide someone to be of a certain identity or a certain orientation, because I would've been for sure, you know, so, um, so I'm just saying, I think that that's a very important point, Gabe, and just thank you for sharing.
Um, I just wanted to thank, uh, my colleagues and the staff and the community that, uh, gave me a shout-out for my birthday last Thursday. I turned the ripe old age of fifty-four, not embarrassed about that, proud to have made it this far. Um, there's many grays for each year, and, uh, um, I just, it's, it's always, it's always fun. I look at the Facebook, uh, posts and see, did I top last year's numbers? I might have, I might have, which means I didn't tick off as many people as I did the prior year, anyway. Um, party at Ms. Marcus's, um, ask her for the address, and, uh, yes, thank, thank you for all those who threw their hat in the ring, um, having done it thrice, um, it is not an easy thing to do and to bring your loved ones through and deal with all that, but, uh, at some point, I will say that this is a rewarding experience. Not there yet, but I'm getting there, thank you.
I don't believe you Noah, um, I, I know that I'm repeating, but I do, I want to thank all the candidates that, um, threw their hat in the ring and ran for this office. We had, we've had a very competitive race, it will be interesting to see what the outcomes are today. I, I really encourage everybody that's even thinking about it or watching it to, to continue to consider running for this, to, running for this board. Uh, we need people to be on this board and to continue, uh, on this incredible path that we are on, and I encourage everybody to do it. It is such hard work, it's hard work to, to campaign and to, uh, put yourself out there, and it's hard work once you get up here. But it is very well worth it, and it's rewarding, and it is for all the right reasons, and so I encourage you to do that. And Tina, thank you for speaking, um, I really appreciate you sharing that experience. I've had my own experience with it, and it's, you know, I think, you know, we talked about going to the rally on, on the weekend, and that really was about supporting Iran, but we are talking about human rights, we're talking about equal rights. We want our kids to be safe in their school and feel, um, that they are not discriminated against, that they are supported. And that goes for every student, regardless of their gender, regardless of their sexual orientation or their ethnicity, and, uh, or what their abilities are, and, and we owe that to all of our students. This is a public school, and, and it's for everyone, and that is our job to make certain that we are taking care of everybody and that there's equity and equal opportunity for all of them, and that's part of the reason why we felt comfortable to pass the resolution in support of Iran, because we support non-discrimination, and we support human rights and equality and freedom. So I thank you for doing that, um, I, I think, I, I feel very passionate about it. Um, and then, um, happy birthday again to Noah, and that's all I have to say, thank you. And Dr. Breggy's good. Uh, so I will conclude the, uh, the meeting, good luck to all the candidates, and the meeting is now adjourned, it is six forty-five PM, thank you.